Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can we take roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Tietzschert?
Here.
Mr. Detzl?
Here.
Mr. Heether?
Here.
Mrs. Taub?
Here.
Before we get started with everything, I just want to take a second and remember Rob Elementary. You know, we have a lot of business that we do here at the school district and I can't imagine, and I see how much our educators and staff love our children, I can't imagine how they feel right now. Twenty-one people lost their lives at 11:40 this week and words cannot express the loss and tragedy involved in this, and let's take a moment of silence while we remember Rob Elementary. Thank you. We'd like to read our mission statement at the beginning of each board meeting. So, Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And that brings us to the PTA Teacher of the Year presentation.
So, we started this last board meeting with some of our PTA Teachers of the Year. We're going to conclude it this evening with the rest of the teachers from the ones who weren't here last time, so I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay so she can continue and honor the rest of our winners for the PTA Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As we've mentioned before today, we are going to honor our T and PTA winners. This award was typically called, or previously called, the Educator of the Year Award. And so, as Darryl mentioned before, we honored our high school and middle school winners on May 9th, and today we are going to recognize our elementary winners. So, we know that our teachers work day and night. They always keep our students at the forefront of all that they do, and we're so happy and thrilled for the work that they do each and every day, so it's an honor to be able to recognize these teachers for all the work they've done all year long. First, I'd like to recognize Amy Wiseman with Pleasant Run Elementary. Amy, and I'll have you all come up front, and if your principal is here, I'll have them accompany you as well. And today, I'm going to be reading the nomination forms that were submitted for each candidate. We have Jamelle Weathers, who is the principal of Pleasant Run Elementary, as well as Ms. Wiseman here. The Pleasant Run Elementary School PTA is proud to nominate Amy Wiseman as the T in PTA for this school year. Ms. Wiseman is our lead intervention specialist. She goes beyond in serving on the building leadership team, supports the building in creating schedules, writes grants to acquire needed materials, and attends all PTA meetings as the teacher representative. Ms. Wiseman brings her passion to students while connecting with parents of students who are struggling and those who have been identified as students with disability. She brings a personal touch to our communication, showing parents that their child is cared for here while they're at school. Within the BLT, Ms. Wiseman collaborates with other members to ensure the building master schedule allows for all students to have the most successful day of learning. Ms. Wiseman leads staff meetings with the other BLT members. She plans, she prepares, and presents school-wide initiatives, data, and professional development, allowing our educators to continue to use the best practices for all students. Ms. Wiseman wrote and was awarded a grant for our school building. She was able to secure a circuit and vinyl so the building can create sensory paths in various locations within the building. Many of our students benefit from these sensory breaks and find success in managing their emotions and body to be better learners. Ms. Wiseman attends all the PTA meetings here at PRAE. She's an active participant and is also a member of the Corrin Elementary PTA in the role of a parent. She supports both of these organizations with donation of time, resources, ideas, and other types of donations. Ms. Wiseman brings out the best in everyone. She's willing to always give and always give a helping hand and a caring heart. Ms. Wiseman is the T in PTA. If you all would join me in honoring Ms. Wiseman for her award this year. Thank you for all that you do. Next, we'll have Susan Kelly with Corrin Elementary, and she will be, well, let's see, I don't believe Colin's here. Karen is here. Karen, will you come up as well?
Everyone's safer in numbers. Everybody's safer in numbers.
Alrighty. Susan has been a member of the PTA for 27 years. During that time, she has volunteered and supported all of our PTA fundraisers and events such as the Back to School Bash, Spring Carnivals, plant sales, and Breakfast with Santa. She's also volunteered countless hours running our PTA Runners Club. She sends out daily, weekly messages to parents in her class with information regarding PTA to encourage students and family involvement in the school and in the PTA. Please join me in giving Ms. Kelly a round of applause for her award this year.
Lindsay, can you have them introduce who they brought, their family and that stuff?
Oh, that would be great.
I have my mom and my dad back here.
Stand up. Stand up.
My husband, Donnie, and my kids, Maddie.
How about Amy?
Ms. Wiseman, would you like to also introduce who you brought today?
I brought my mom.
And now, I'd like to call up Ms. Eileen Brawning as well as Caitlin Randall, who's the principal of Monfort Heights Elementary. Now, Ms. Brawning is not only the TMPTA winner for Monfort Heights, but she's also selected as the Northwest Local School District T in PTA winner. So, she's the overall winner for all teachers, which is wonderful. Alright, Ms. Brawning does morning car ride duty every day. She personally greets every family and opens every door to welcome students. She also has a smile on her face regardless of the weather. Ms. Brawning has built relationships with many families over the years. She attends all school events and is not only an active participant, but consistently there to help set up and clean up. Ms. Brawning has a passion for not only teaching, but for Monfort Heights community. Regarding PTA participation, Ms. Brawning has stepped up and helped with nearly every event we've put together. Our end-of-the-year celebration at Strickers Grove, she was one of the small number of teachers and staff that agreed to play a part in our Fast Pass game, which would allow the winning child to pick a ride of their choosing, and she would ride alongside of it. Not only did she do it, she did it with a smile the whole time. In a year when we had, have had very few parent volunteers, Ms. Brawning has stepped up and volunteered at so many of our events. She was extremely helpful manning the PTA table so that we could visit our children's classrooms. Please join me in giving a round of applause to Ms. Eileen Brawning. Ms. Brawning, would you like to introduce who you brought today?
I brought my husband, Mike.
We have several teachers that could not participate, who couldn't be here today, so I do want to take some time to just say their names and in the school that they're associated with. Kristi McGuire is the TMPTA winner at Taylor Elementary. Jennifer Hay is the PTA winner for Struble Elementary. Jacob Page, who wasn't able to be here the last time, is the winner for Corrin High School. And Abigail Christian is the winner for White Oak Middle School. Thank you all. And may I have our winners come up front one more time? Or one last round of applause, how about that?
That also means she wants a picture. Well, Lindsay? Well, she does her photo, we'll just say, on behalf of the district, congratulations and thank you for all that you do and to the families who are here. Teaching is a family affair, so the help that they give in setting up and tearing down classrooms, the patience they have when papers, your grading are all over the kitchen table, the planning and the support they give to get the materials ready. We appreciate all that you do to support the teachers so that they can be the best that they want to be for their kids. So, thank you to the teachers and for the families who support them.
At this time, there's new ones, no luck getting outside. I'll have the principal with all the winners getting outside for photos and the families who are all here.
So, next, we have a building presentation. So, we have a presentation today from Houston Early Learning Center. So, May Marie is here to present a building update. I'm going to let her take it from here and introduce who she has with her and the presentation.
Well, good evening.
Hi.
On behalf of Houston Early Learning Center, I am very happy to have with us here this evening Mrs. Donia Newhouse. Mrs. Newhouse is one of our amazing preschool teachers, and she is here to share with you the importance of having a classroom pet, or may I say pets. So, she is here to share with you Harriet and Athena. Harriet and Athena are skinny pigs. They're also an integral part of her classroom. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Newhouse and Harriet and Athena.
Hi, I am, sorry. I brought Harriet and Athena today to share with you guys. Mrs. Murray asked me to share how I integrate them and experiences with them throughout the curriculum, and I just went ahead and brought them with me. If you've never seen a skinny pig before, it's a hairless skinny pig. They look a little strange, kind of like a mini hippo or a mini rhinoceros even, but... So, this is Harriet.
Oh, my gosh. Carrie will hold it for you if you need it.
And this is Athena. And they really might look kind of strange, but they do make the perfect classroom pets. They don't run, they don't run away, they don't bite, they let the kids pet them, they let the kids hold them. They're really calm and gentle and forgiving. And we do a lot of the things that you would expect to be done with classroom pets. We let the kids feed them and we let the kids make sure they have enough water, take care of them, and that's really good to show them responsibility. But then, we also let the kids hold them and pet them. If they're having a bad day, if they're sad, if they just kind of miss their mom, the skinny pigs seem to really calm them down and just put them kind of in a better state of mind. Calling them, calling me down right now because public speaking is not my thing. But we also check off most of the life science standards in our curriculum just from them having daily interactions with them. I also like to integrate experiences with them throughout the curriculum, and one of the ways that we did that is when they were dirty and needed a bath, we read Mo Willems, The Pigeon Needs a Bath. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Mo Willems or not, but he is kind of like a rock star with the Little Kids Children's Literature, and so, we really enjoyed reading the story and we enjoyed discussing it and answering questions about it. We retold the story, and then, we talked about how we felt about baths and made some predictions about how we thought Harriet and Athena might feel about having a bath. And we graphed our predictions, which was a way to tie in our math standards. We have, each child has their name on a clothespin, and they hung their name on the yes side if they thought that Harriet and Athena would like the bath, and on the no side if they thought that they would not like the bath. And then, we were able to talk about all the graphing, like, you know, is it more? Which one has less? How many are there altogether? And we then went ahead and gave Harriet and Athena a bath. We did it during our small group time, and we did Athena's bath in the morning and Harriet's bath in the afternoon, because I'm just going to tell you that no skinny pig should be bathed two times in one day by a group of preschoolers. So, the first group was responsible for getting the bath ready. They had to make sure the water was just the right temperature. They put some Dawn dishwashing soap in the water. We gave them little popsicle sticks so they could stir the water up and make it bubbly, like a bubble bath. And then, if you scroll on down, you'll see one more picture like that, yeah. And then, the next group was able to bathe Harriet and Athena with wet paper towels. If you click on that link right there that says up a little bit, Athena's A and B. Sorry, I would do it, but I really don't know how this thing works.
I'm going to put Athena in. What do you think is going to happen when I put her in? Do you think she's going to like it or not so much? You think she'll like it? Nolan, you think maybe not so much? What about you, Faith? You think she will like it? Okay, let's put her inside, and then, remember, you have your paper towel. You're going to very gently use that paper. Bless you. Put your mask up over your nose. You're going to very gently... Alright, are we ready? You can just take this and very gently. Does she like it or not so much? What's she trying to do?
Trying to get out.
Yeah, she's like, get me out of this bath. Why does she, why does she need a bath? Look at, look at the bottom of the pan now. Is it cleaner or do you see dirt in there? I see dirt in there too. Why does she need a bath? Is she clean or was she dirty? Look at her, where's she going? You have escaped, Athena. There you go, sweetie. You're going to be okay. You know what, I'm going to pick her up so you guys can get her belly too, because her belly needs to be cleaned too. Can you guys get her belly, really gently on her belly, okay? Don't be scared. Athena is so sweet and so nice. Even if she doesn't like the bath, she would never hurt you. She does look nice, doesn't she? She's such a good girl. Alright, we're going to let, we're going to let her out now. She does have nails, doesn't she? I don't know if they make nail polish for skinny pigs, but she'd look really good with her nails done up.
And then, the next group was responsible for drying her off, so I have a little video with that too. It's the one down, yeah.
Okay, guys, what did we just do with Athena? We gave her a... Does she like baths? She does not. Is she wet or dry right now? What do you think we need to do? Yes, so I'm going to get the towel ready, and then, I'm going to let you guys dry her off really gently, okay? I'll let you guys pet her when she's all finished, okay? Alright, you can stand up if you want to. You guys can stand up, okay? You can stand up and scooch closer together. And I'm going to put her on, I'm going to put her on the towel, and then, I'll let you guys, I'll let you guys bundle her up and kind of dry her off. Are you ready? So, you're going to take the towel like this. Come on over, Olivia, it's okay. Take the towel like this and just kind of dry her off, okay? Can you guys help? Oh, it's okay, come on closer, it's alright. Does she, do you think she likes being in the towel better or being in the tub better? I think she likes the towel. Look at her, she, is she... I think she's hiding in it, isn't she? Should we see, should we see if she's dry? Did you guys kind of go like this? You can go like this while she's in there if you want to. That'll help her dry off. She is very cute.
She is cute.
She is the best. So is Harriet. Harriet is going to get a bath this afternoon, but the afternoon kids are going to get her a bath. Alright, now, we're going to take this off. Does she look dry now? Alright, nice job. You guys can go back to your center.
And then, the last group was responsible for rubbing coconut oil on Athena.
Do you guys know what this is? It's called coconut oil. What did we do with Athena just now? We gave her a bath, then we dried her off. Do you know what's really, really good for her skin? Coconut oil, yeah, and baths, baths too. But coconut oil, because skinny pigs, sometimes their skin gets dry, just like how maybe sometimes you get dry skin, and coconut oil is really super good for her dry skin. So, I'm going to put her down on the towel, and then, I'm going to give you guys a little bit of coconut oil on your fingers, and you can rub it into her skin, and it'll make her skin really super healthy and shiny, okay? Yeah, absolutely, you can wash your hands after because it's a little bit sticky. Alright, there you go, girlie. She is, she's looking around. Alright. Here is a little bit for you. Don't rub it on until I tell you to, okay? And a little bit for you. And a little bit for you. Alright, and then, when you put it on her, you just kind of put it on like this. Just rub it gently on her. Are you guys ready? Here, let me scooch her this way a little bit. It's okay, you still have a little bit. There you go. Alright, let's rub it in. Go ahead, Zion, you can do it too. There you go. Try to get it all over her. See how shiny it makes her? It's really good for her skin. Makes her skin nice, soft, and it makes it not so dry. It's dry and... How do you think she feels now? Think she feels better now that she's gotten her bath? Alright, you guys did a super job. You can go wash your hands now, okay?
And then, after she was all finished with her bath, we put her back with her best friend, Harriet. And we talked about what we did, the steps that we took to give her her bath, and we linked into our writing standards by doing a shared writing about just the steps to giving her a bath. So, we stretched our words out and wrote down the sounds that we heard. We talked about spaces between words and about punctuation, and then, when we were all finished, we went back and reread what we had written, so that linked the writing into it also. And one thing that I've noticed is that Harriet and Athena are, they're really motivating to the kids, and when we do experiences like that with them and then tie it into other areas of the curriculum, it makes it more meaningful to them and it makes them more likely to remember those standards that we were trying to cover when, when we involve the animals. So, that's all I have. Thanks for listening.
So, now that school's out, where do they go?
My house.
So, they're really that calm and compliant? As in the videos? It's just like...
That's how they are.
Wow.
They are so sweet and so calm.
They haven't made. Like, it doesn't get any better than that.
No, it doesn't. They get lots of attention.
Bad attention, no reason to run, but...
No, they don't have any reason to run, but I think some of the smaller animals like that, they kind of run more and they kind of are more likely to admit that to the kids, but these guys, they don't.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation.
Before we move on, we need to go back to the Teacher of the Year real quick. So, I'm going to have Lindsay come back up because following up from the PTA Teacher of the Year, we do have some other staff recognitions that are part of that, that she wanted to make sure were included, but we kind of moved on a little quick for her from the last one. So, I'm going to let her finish up.
Alright, so, you all know this year that substitutes were hard to come by, and so, there were the shortage of substitutes, so we appreciate every sub that we had in all of our buildings. This year, we had actual substitutes that were, that were named Substitutes of the Year by the Hamilton County Educational Service Center. And so, we just want to take a second to recognize the two that were named. We have one here today, Ms. Allison Letcher, who works at Monfort Heights Elementary. So, we'll have Ms. Letcher as well as Ms. Randall come up front. And I'm going to read the submission that was put in. Ms. Letcher is a parent of three children, two of which are currently enrolled at Monfort Heights Elementary. She took initiative to become, to become a substitute teacher at Monfort Heights during the 2020-21 school year. Schools interact with substitute teachers regularly. The past two years, however, were incredibly unique when it came to finding subs. The commitment and trust in our policy, health initiatives, and operations that Ms. Letcher acknowledged to sub during the pandemic expresses her loyalty and passion for the students at Monfort Heights. During the 2020-21 school year, staff at Monfort Heights were required to work in cohorts and adhere to strict policy. Ms. Letcher volunteered to transition throughout the building and sub for countless teachers daily and continued to express her commitment that she is here for the sake of our students, having consistency and support during such a difficult time in their lives. There were days that her problem-solving, participation, and scheduling and coverage made all the difference to keeping full classes of students in person. In the fall of 2021-22, there was a reflected unexpected twist in turns. Ms. Letcher maintained her commitment to our staff and students yet again. Many days, she would get there, the last, one last minute text or call asking her to come in and sub, and would show up as quickly as she could in good spirits, ready to help when needed. The words of some of our teachers are, "She saved me and my class." Countless staff and students could share a time when Ms. Letcher supported them over the last two years. Impressively, frontline management reports show well over 200 days where she's subbed in our building. What reports won't show is her sincere love for our students. Ms. Letcher is viewed as part of our MHE family, as she is considered by staff and students as an imperative part of our teaching staff. It's not uncommon to see where she moves throughout the building greeting students by name or finding her after hours volunteering at a school event. During Read Across the Miracle Week, Ms. Letcher came in on days that she wasn't scheduled to sub. She even dressed as Mrs. Frisler. She allowed teachers to sign up throughout the day for her to come in and read on the Magic School Bus to her class. Why? Because that's just something Ms. Letcher would do. It's no doubt that Ms. Allison Letcher is more than deserving to be awarded MHE Substitute Employee of the Year. Our Monfort Heights family strongly believes that Ms. Letcher should be recognized beyond our MHE family. She's committed to our musketeer mission, take care of myself, take care of others, and take care of me. Ms. Letcher has been a role model for our musketeer mission, and now, it's time to award her with more than just a thank you. Please join me in honoring Ms. Letcher for being the Substitute of the Year. Ms. Letcher, did you have any family or anyone that you brought with you today?
No, my kids are at a costume stocking party.
Having fun. Alright, well, thank you for all that you do. We had one last gentleman who was recognized as Substitute of the Year, and he, his name is Brandon Nelson, and he works at White Oak Middle School. He's not able to make it today, but I did want to take some time to recognize him. Thank you all.
Thank you. I was at the Monfort Heights PTA meeting one time, and there was an interaction between everybody there speaking about you and how... speaking about you and how much you've helped them. And can't thank you enough, honestly, cannot thank you enough.
It is a critical role, and we appreciate everyone who helps support our staff. And the comments speak for themselves, thank you.
Ms. Letcher, with you and Caitlin and also Greenhouse and Ms. Murray, she's going outside.
Yeah, I'm gonna picture with Athena. I feel like you guys twins. All right. That brings us to Student Achievement Liaison Report.
Yes, we have a few things. At White Oak Middle School on Friday, May 13th, Aubrey Meyer competed against 275 other writers at the Power of the Penn State Tournament hosted by Otterbine University. Aubrey secured her spot at state by placing in the top 10% of writers from the Southwest region. White Oak also sent 10 BPA students, Business Professionals of America, to the National Leadership Conference in Dallas. And making it to Nationals is an accomplishment in itself, as these students beat out hundreds of others' middle school students at regional and state competitions to qualify for Nationals. Six out of the 10 finished in the top 10 of their event. Ayush Dehaal was 10th out of 16 in Entrepreneurship Exploration. Logan Holtman, uh, was 9th out of 40 in Digital Citizenship. David Gonzalez, Lincoln Ryan, and Isaac Jovett were 4th out of 12 in Digital Game Design Team. Janaya Dwarra, Astau Mboji, they were 6th out of 11 in Website Design. And these students also were able to visit, uh, the Dallas Aquarium, the Museum of Illusions, and Six Flags. Um, and they were able to pay for these activities through a collective fundraising effort. Corinne Middle School also sent students to BPA Nationals. Elise Manus and Elena Gainer, they placed first as they presented a Passion Project. And Madison Meyer was a top 10 finisher. Arius McKinney was also fortunate to make the conference and represent Corinne Middle School. Um, I did receive, there's a thank you, uh, from Corinne Middle School students, uh, Elise Manus. And it says, "Dear Northwest Local School District Board, thank you for partnering in programs like BPA at Corinne Middle School. I was able to compete in the Presentation Management in Dallas, Texas. Without you, I would never have had this opportunity. It was a great experience, thank you for supporting BPA." Um, at Northwest High School, the following recognition for spring sports. Boys Track, the SWOC Championship. Brian Miller, the SWOC Boys Track Coach of the Year. Malachi Snow was also the Boys Track Runner of the Year. First team all SWOC was Deja Cotton in High Jump. Malachi Snow in the 200-meter dash, 110 hurdles and 300-meter hurdles. And Malachi Snow, Charles Williams, Noah Calvin, and Diego Yun on the four-by-200 relay. Chris Barrow with the High Jump. Evelyn Rasing Softball and Adam Rollin Baseball. Uh, second team all SWOC is Deja Cotton. Uh, Long Jump, Charles Williams 200-meter dash. Chris Barrow 400-meter dash. TJ Johnson Discus. Izaki Wampetti Long Jump. And Lorenzo Vernon in High Jump. Annabelle Sickles in Softball. And Haley Swishhelm Softball and Mitchell Graves for Baseball. Uh, Honorable Mention, all SWOC is Alexandra Young, 200-meter dash. Kason Berry in the 1600-meter Run. Kamari Harden and Fernando Gu, uh, Guzman were the boys tennis, uh, first doubles. Ally Eibold Softball and Braden Barnes Baseball. Um, I do know we had two, uh, students, uh, Mark Hogan and Ethan Mason for Corinne High School got second-team, uh, baseball recognition as well. So if we can give all those students a round of applause.
Okay, that brings us to Legislative Update.
Mark, the Ohio Legislature remains in recess. Um, I would expect in light of the, um, events, the sad events of this week, there'll be all kinds of new legislation for school safety. I'm not sure where that'll head. But I have already been hearing lots of rumblings about, um, more teachers, the options for carrying firearms, school guards, that sort of thing, so we shall see. And that's about all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Jim, this is your big moment.
There you go. Uh, can I have Chris Trenton come up? He's our supervisor for Butler Tech and he, he's got some students he brought with him today.
So as you heard, coming out of COVID, one of the great things about coming out of COVID is what we can compete in national events like the BPA, um, in Dallas. And then we also competed, uh, in Atlanta with DECA. Coming up, host those in Nashville in June and FCC LA is in San Diego. So we, we have lots of students that are competing nationally. Just to get to Nationals, like you said, is a big, big deal. Uh, but I do have two groups that did place nationally. A group from Colrain, so I'd like the girls to come on up, and a group from Northwest that are just gonna talk about, a little bit about their experiences, what they thought about, uh, what they competed in, and, and just talk about how, um, it affected them, so turn it over to them.
Hi, I'm Isabella, and we go to Colrain.
I'm Chapin Newman.
I'm Jordan Selig.
I'm Olivia Burr.
I'm Sina Berhe. We're all given the opportunity courtesy of Butler Tech to go to Dallas, Texas to compete in the BPA National Competition. I competed in Ethics and Professionalism.
Can I have, can you speak into the mic? Because it'll be on TV, we want him to be able to hear what you're saying.
Got it. So my name's Sina Berhe, I got the opportunity to compete in Dallas, Texas courtesy of Butler Tech. I competed in Ethics and Professionalism. I placed second place in the nation. And I think part of, um, my, my event was circulated around speech. I was given an ethical dilemma in a workplace, and I was able to present a pro, uh, a solution for the ethical dilemma. And my methods of approaching it, um, were immersing myself as a human resources representative of the company I was given to represent. And I think, um, the effects that this, um, trip had on me, not only did I get to travel, um, out west, but I also got to improve my public speaking skills. I think without the opportunity I was given to compete, um, at the BPA competition, I wouldn't be here today, have the courage to speak in front of the board like this. So I really do thank Butler Tech and my advisor as well for giving me this opportunity.
So we all competed in a group event. Um, it was called a Virtual Startup Enterprise Team. Um, so we had to come up with a business plan. Um, our business plan was called The Paint Factory. Um, so it was basically an entertainment venue with paint-based activities. Um, and we got Best in Show. Um, then we also placed third nationally. So it was a lot of fun. Do you guys have anything to add?
I'm thankful we got to experience this, um, courtesy of Butler Tech, and I had a great time.
Um, I also competed, um, in Atlanta for DECA. Um, and then I was a national, uh, international finalist. So I competed in Restaurant and Food Service Management. Um, and I had to do, uh, role play, they call it, and they give you like an event, um, and you have to solve the solution. Um, there's a test that goes along with it, so it was a lot of fun. We got to, you know, uh, talk to other Butler Tech assistants, so that was really fun.
Outstanding. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Clifford. Um, my name's Kate White.
I'm Nathan Love.
And we're from Northwest High School in Financial Service Class through Butler Tech. And we also competed in BPA. Um, we did the Virtual Startup Enterprise Team. And we created an app called Neighborly. It's kind of like the lawn care version of Uber. Um, and back in November, we did a business plan that was about 30 pages long, and we submitted that and got top 20 in the nation. And then we gave a Shark Tank kind of pitch to judges, and we got top 10. And we got invited to the National Leadership Conference in Dallas where we placed second.
Yeah, um, it was super fun. We hope, um, we are gonna compete in the same event, and we'll have to make a new business, but yeah.
Yeah, I would really like to thank, uh, Butler Tech and our advisor, uh, advisor to, uh, let us experience something as such as good as Nationals. I never really got something to experience something as good as that, so I would like to thank them.
Outstanding. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you also. Michelle Hatzell's here, she's, uh, with the business teacher at Colrain. So with her, under her leadership, you know, just like a football team, they put in tons and tons of hours, not, not just on Friday, Friday nights, but there's lots of other hours they're going to. So I want to thank her and Peter Clark's leadership as well. Put in a lot of time with the Northwest students as well, so just want to say thank to them as well.
These experiences, it, for people who just, I'll say, come out of school and then go into a vocation, like, it may be years before they ever get an opportunity to kind of get that experience, and they're getting it in high school. That's amazing.
Yeah, exactly. And not only are they getting that experience, but they're competing against the best of the best and then placing, uh, at the top of their, you know, division. So it's truly kudos to all of their hard work and, and the teachers that, that are there as well, so.
And it's networking, I'm sure people are paying attention to names, for sure.
Yeah, yes, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Chris. That brings us to any reports from any employee organizations?
None that I know of.
Dave?
Just a quick thank you to, now this was a challenging year. Most teachers have told me this was probably one of their most challenging years. I've been doing this for 29 years, and I will say this was one of the more challenging years. But I'd like to thank all the bus drivers, custodians, office support people, administrators, teachers, aides, nurses, the board, and everybody for making this a successful year. Um, look forward to moving on to next year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that brings us to Communications. We've not had any submitted this evening. And that brings us to Superintendent Consent Items.
So for tonight, we have our personnel agenda of two retirees, 31 resignations, nine initial appointments, 11 change in status, and three, um, reduction in force positions. We have business items, including vendor contracts from Hamlin County Educational Service Center, donations from the University of Michigan to Corinne High School for a monetary donation. Um, a monetary donation to Struble from Ameritas, and supplies to Corinne High School from Staples. And then we also have on curriculum tonight, the approval of the instructional fee list that was on the last board agenda, the approval of Financial Literacy Resource. And then tonight is also the approval of the Elementary Math Adoption. I just want to acknowledge that for the Elementary Math Adoption, there's been a lot of conversation with staff, with curriculum, and the board has been very involved in asking a lot of very good questions about the process and where we are with our decision and what's best for the district. And the final recommendation is bringing in one program. We've considered multiple, um, options based on all the feedback that have come in, but the final recommendation that is coming to you is, um, Into Math as a single option for all elementaries. And I thank Lori and Brenda for all the work they've done. Lori has been meeting with every elementary teacher team to get feedback. I know Dave has been involved trying to get feedback, um, from the membership of the union. And the board has been involved with a lot of conversations and questions. So, um, that process has brought us to this final recommendation. And I thank everyone for their involvement in that process. With that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
Some of, a second. There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion or comments or questions?
Mark, I'd like to just, regarding the math textbook, um, it's been a lot of back and forth on it. The thing that was convincing to me, um, if it had been with the teacher survey, it's 60-40, but our teacher survey was like 80-20. And that's just a landslide favoring the Into Math program. And as a result, it's just hard to go against that when you try to listen to the people in the trenches who are doing the work. So that's, um, after reviewing the program coming in, going over the, the two programs that we were considering as finalists, um, that's pretty much what pushed me over. And I've never seen so much interest in a, any kind of educational things since I've been on the board, which started to do it a few years off in between in 2001. I mean, we've had history books, um, science books, various math reading, you name it. And I've never seen a tenth of the interest for anything compared to the new math program. And that's it.
Uh, I just want to reiterate what you were saying there. I appreciate everybody's voice. You know, you've mentioned in multiple meetings that you want the district to be collaborative, and everybody's, I think you say, arrows pointing in the same direction. And everybody had a voice in this, and I appreciate it. And I really appreciate your hard work and Lori's hard work. I know she's got quite a few miles on her shoes, it sounds like, from building to building. And it, and I just want to say from, we're not qualified to critique curriculum. Like, I'm not, not trying to step into that role at all. To me, it's, I think, being ambassador is the community, are, are, is a community being represented properly? Uh, and are we listening to all parties that are involved? And I think that's the process in which, um, the board collectively, uh, looked into this. And I'm looking forward to seeing the curriculum brought out, because it's my understanding, it's been a while since we've had a real foundational math curriculum. And so that'll be, it's exciting to see where that's gonna take us in a couple of years.
Yeah, and that was why the Curriculum Department was so adamant that when, um, mid-year, they had, um, through moving money around and other adoptions that came in at a different price point, they didn't want to wait. They wanted to do something for the teachers, and they knew this was a priority. Um, and so probably the reason that there was such interest is, um, what they had wasn't working, and they needed something, and so there was huge interest in this. And I appreciate that curriculum abbreviated the process to make sure that the teachers could have something to start next year.
Lori, again, I appreciate you going out and hearing everybody, because we've, that's been kind of a hurdle i- in the district, from what I've seen, is people just don't feel heard. And you literally spoke with everybody that would be involved, except, I think, one, one group that you didn't get a chance to meet, and for whatever reason. So I, I applaud you for that, thank you. Passes five to zero, here comes Into Math.
And, and actually, here comes some new people. We have, um, part of the, um, adoption tonight was, um, two of the administrative positions. And we want to take a moment and introduce, um, some of our new administrators to the board. So I want to start with Carrie Hester. Carrie is gonna be our Director of Human Resources for the district, and I want to introduce Carrie. She earned her Bachelor of Science from Wright State University and her Master's of Education in Administration from Xavier. Uh, Ms. Hester holds licensure in the following areas. Superintendent, Business Manager, um, Pre-K-12 Principal, and Pre-K-12 Intervention Specialist. Additionally, she has earned the endorsement of PHCLE, which is a Human Capital Leader and Education Professional. Ms. Hester began her teaching career as an Intervention Specialist here in Northwest at Northwest High School. She also taught at Corinne Middle School before moving into a Special Education Administration position for the Hamilton City Schools. Ms. Hester, um, experiences in human resources began in Hamilton when she accepted the position of Assistant Director of HR. She then accepted a position with Springbrough Schools as the Director of Human Resources. She was promoted to Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Operations. And while serving in that role, the Board of Education asked her to serve as the Interim Superintendent. She transitioned back into her role of Assistant Superintendent after 14 months of leading the district. Ms. Hester and her husband reside in Corinne Township, and they are the proud parents of four adult sons, Donald, Cal, Cole, and Alec, who are all graduates of Corinne High School. And when Carrie was in the district, I actually had the privilege of working with her at Corinne Middle School. And I am excited that Carrie is coming home to Northwest and that she's bringing her wealth of experience to the district from an HR perspective. So Carrie, welcome to the district, I am so glad you're here.
Carrie, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'm just super, super thankful, motivated to serve the community that we all love. And I'm very thankful that my sons have come tonight to encourage me and support me. And Morgan also, and we're just a Haley, our daughter-in-law. Super excited. Oh, Donald, my son.
Your husband's here too.
But thank you, thank you for your support. But thank you, thank you for your support.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations, look forward to it.
Welcome aboard.
Carrie, in all that resume, weren't you Director of Student Services or something here for a year or two?
Not here.
The other Hester.
The other Hester.
And then I also want to let Brenda introduce our new Assistant Director of Curriculum that was also approved tonight.
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Emily Doblinger, she's in the back here, Emily will be coming in as our Assistant Director of Secondary Curriculum. Emily spent the past 15 years working with the incredible students, staff, and families in several Greater Cincinnati School Districts, she's a native of Toledo, Ohio, and an alumnus of the University of Toledo. She moved to Cincinnati in 2007 to teach at Barfield Middle School in Hamilton, she's taught at Hamilton High School as well, and also Wyoming Middle School. After completing her Master's in Educational Leadership from the University of Cincinnati, Emily moved into a Dean position at Wyoming Middle School, she served as the Assistant Principal at Ross High School, working closely with curriculum from everybody I've talked to, and she's currently Assistant Principal at Milford Junior High School. Emily's incredibly excited, she says, to start her new adventure with us as a secondary Assistant Director, she lives in Wyoming with her husband, Michael, and her sons, Thomas, and her daughter, Reagan. She's here this evening with her husband, Michael, and we are so excited to welcome you to the Curriculum Department and to the Northwest family, thank you for being here.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, ma'am?
I'm just overjoyed with just the confidence that I've already received, and I'm excited to get started. Curriculum is my passion, and this is my dream job, so that I get to start in Northwest is very exciting. Every person I've talked to, they've just said, this is what you wanted, this is what you wanted, and so it's just very exciting that I get to come to Northwest and work with two incredible, probably more, but these two incredible women and learn from them, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, you have quite the diversity in the districts that you've worked in, like you've seen a little bit of everything, which is great, I mean, that's, that's hard to get that experience. This is an uplifting evening.
Try to keep it upbeat.
Love it. Okay, that brings us to Amy Wells.
So, good evening, for our fiscal consent items tonight, we have our regular meeting minutes to dispense with reading up and approve the May 9th regular meeting minutes, our financial report for the month of April, our all-funds balance was $77 million with our general fund unreserved balance of $44 million, our revenues and expenditures for the month of April were 83% through the year, and our revenue was $94 million or 95% of our on-target and trend, and our expenditures were $76 million or 78% for the year. Our weighted average return for investments was .57, and with interest rates now starting to rise, we should start seeing that increase as maturities happen. For our bills, we have our list of monthly bills that are routine monthly bills, as well as we had a roof repair, repurchased a van for our Transportation Department, we had some asbestos removal, and auxiliary and grant fund payments. We also need to accept, approve, and appropriate two grants, one is Taylor Elementary received a grant for $750 from Duke Energy for two buddy benches to put outside, and Northwest High School received a $1,000 grant for their coaching program from High Schools at Work. And then we need to approve our student activities handbook, that was for informational purposes at last meeting. With that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Some of them. Second.
Motion, second, any questions, comments, discussion? When will we get the buddy benches?
We'll probably have to purchase them, and once they're in, probably as soon as possible.
Yeah, thank you.
Depends on what boat they're sitting.
Pass this five to zero, thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Next, I have a resolution authorizing the issuance of Energy Conservation Limited Tax General Obligation Refunding Bonds. With all that said, this is for our QZAB bonds that we issued in 2013, and with some changes in our high school curriculum, we need to refund our QZAB bonds for $1.5 million remaining, just to redo a bank RFP and roll it into a bank bond and go from there. So, with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve refunding our general obligation QZAB bonds.
Second.
So, it's May, every November, we do a five-year forecast, and in May, we do an update of where we're at with our five-year forecast and how we're going to trend for the next four years. Things we want to keep in mind as we're looking at our forecast and planning is that we have a community partnership, that we will not increase our expenditures from year to year more than a 3% growth, we have a cash balance reserve policy to make sure we continue to have 60 days' worth of cash reserves on hand, and then our community also asks us in 2019 with our last levy that we come back more often with smaller levies. So, our revenues, 53% of our revenues come from our local property taxes, with 4% from personal property taxes, another 5% is the state pays the homestead and rollback for our community, and we have 24% that comes from the state and state foundation, with another 4% in restricted aid. 10% of our revenue is like tuition from other school districts for students that we are educating, interest income, and also our Green Township tip. The new funding formula, Fair School Funding Formula, has inputs, and the inputs are valued at fiscal '18 costs, and funded at fiscal '22, and now going into fiscal '23. So, when your inputs that are calculating the formula are at fiscal '18, and we're at '22 inflation going into '23, it's putting more pressure on our local community. Our local community capacity to fund our school district is increasing at 18%, and the formula itself is only increasing by seven, which makes our community look richer in the state funding formula. Expenditure-wise, our expenditures are pretty consistent year after year, 58% is in salaries and another 20% is in benefits, so typical school district, 80% is in personnel, and we're right at 78. We have 15% in our purchased services, this includes tuition to other police, school districts, utilities, and our special needs costs. We have 3% in supplies, and 4% in other, a lot of that is our auditor and treasurer fees that we pay for the county to collect our taxes and send us our money. But as you can see, even in 2016, our picture wasn't very much different. What did change was purchased services, we used to pay about $6 million for our students being educated elsewhere, the state would fund us for those students and then take both the state share and our local property taxes and send to the districts where our students were attending. When that shift changed, what it did was it changed our salary percentage of our pie from 54 to 58, so our personnel piece grew as our purchased services shrank, but our expenditures are pretty much the same as they've been year after year. So, how do we look with our funding? We have our renewal in 2027, that'll be coming up, as well as one in 2029. Our operating deficit starts in 2024, and we have been predicting this and communicating with our community about this since our 2019 levy, and it continues to trend this way. Gives us a picture of our funding cycle, so our revenue is flat when passed, and expenditures, of course, increase over time with inflation. You can see in 2017, the peak in expenditures, that was when we transferred $10 million from general fund to pay for our three elementary, to help build our three new elementaries. Then we came back down into just regular expenditures, increased and broke even in 2020, and that was with, we have our new levies, so we have an increase in revenue, and we're also expecting to start to break even again in 2023, and then start deficit And at the bottom, the black line is our cash balance policy, and the green line is our cash balance, projected cash balance, so as you can see, in 2026, we start dipping below our cash balance policy. What this means is that over time, without additional revenue or changes to our operations, we will have a deficit on operations, which will increase through 2026, and decrease our financial stability. In order to not have deficit spending in 2026, we would have to reduce our operations by 5.3%, and remember, we reduced our operations $2.6 million in 2021. This is just another way to see the picture, the blue is our revenue, and the green is our expenditures, and you can see in 2021, our revenue is exceeding our expenditures because we have to pass a levy that actually is larger than what we need when we need it, so that we can break even and then use those additional resources in the earlier years and the later years, before we have to go back for another levy cycle. We break even in 2023, we start deficit spending in 2024, in fiscal 2025, the orange is what's showing as our new five mil, five-year rolling levy that we need to stay with our current operations, it doesn't add anything to our operations, it just currently maintains what we currently have. When you look at our expenditures, and we do stay within our 3% partnership for the five-year forecast, we go a little bit above in 2024, and that's because some of our personnel are currently being paid out of ESER, they were in general fund prior to ESER, we were able to shift them into ESER while we had the federal grant, and then, once we no longer have the grant, they'll come back into general fund. But we are able to, over the five years, have an average of a 2.4% increase growth on our five-year forecast, and you can also notice on the left-hand side, our expenditures have remained relatively flat at $94 million for the past three years. In 2020, we shut down from the pandemic, and then in 2021, we operated differently, we had cohorts, and we also reduced our operations by $2.6 million. And then in 2022, we've had supply chain issues, we've had staffing shortages, and we also ceded our health insurance and our severance funds, and that was $2 million, so without ceding those two, we would be back at $94 million. But that is to help us with the ebbs and flows in the future years and keep it relatively flat and consistent.
You put a allocation, if I remember correctly, here, this is a few months ago, to kind of help offset so we can strategize for that, correct?
Correct, that's the additional $2 million, there was a million in each that we ceded that, and then there is a deduction that happens with every payroll, one is like .014% and the other one is .05%, I mean, they're small, but that way we can project retirements and health insurance increases and try to have that reserve set aside for when those things happen.
That's a good strategy.
Our cash reserve balance, for 60 days, we stay within that until 2026, and then we start dipping below, and while you're like, well, you still have $24 million, one more year after that, we will be at 16, and the next year after that, we'll be at 8. We don't have enough tax delinquencies increase, if tax revenue is delayed like it was in 2020, if we had an emergency, and $8 million is one month of expenditures, so we would barely be able to meet payroll.
And do your numbers incorporate the new state law on the reappraisals that we've talked about, the inability, you had said it would cost us $1.5 million a year, starting in 2023?
No, I said, we saved the district $1.6 million in the challenges that we did this past year, by not able to do challenges, it's going to depend on who files them, and what their valuation is and what it's reduced, so I'm not, I can't predict what the...
But you said the average was usually around 1.4 or something like that?
I said, the current year, we actually saved the district $1.6 million.
$1.6, okay, so there's no way to, there's no, like, mean, like, looking at the last 10 years, that's so long?
It changes every year based on who files, what their current valuation is, what they're asking for.
But suffice it to say, it's not going to make the numbers look any better.
No, that would actually reduce our revenue.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Amy.
So, with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the May five-year forecast and assumptions as presented.
Some of them. Second.
Motion, second, any discussion, questions? When we did the $2.6 million reduction post-levy, a lot of them were positions that had been open and we weren't refilled, and so I think, when you did the swap out, there was only like a loss of a few positions, if any, correct?
It was like three or four. Yeah, we were able to riff a lot of positions, but the people that we riffed were offered comparable positions in other positions that were currently open.
Right, exactly, so, that was amazing, actually, but are we going to prepare for things like that already, like, how far out in advance are we going to start preparing something similar to that, because that wasn't like a couple of month thing, that was an accumulation of holding positions open for a while, I'm assuming.
So, the presentation that was just presented does not include any reductions?
I understand.
Reductions would mean, we weren't able to have the revenue, or we were not planning on increasing revenue, we would have to start planning reductions. With compounding, the sooner you make reductions, the less impact you'll have. If we wait till 2026, you're looking at double what we did in 2021.
I guess what I'm getting at is, we're just going to keep a sharp eye on things that we can reduce, eliminate, or backfill, that would help with the cost savings in the event we have to make that adjustment again, like we did a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and one of the things that we do is we have a staffing plan that kind of allocates based on need, and so we fill positions that way, but we're always looking at efficiencies, and if there are other systems that we can bring in that would help, you know, make things more efficient, and we can be more efficient without as many people, we do that, but our current operations are based on what our buildings and our systems say really need in order to operate at the level we are. So, without what Amy mentioned, without any additional revenue, we would have to make reductions to what we offer in terms of services. And based on what, you know, our buildings and our departments have said, we are as bare-bones as we can, because we've asked everyone, the last time we went through this, you know, let's, let's kind of trim everything to be as lean as we possibly can, so we would hope that we would be able to maintain our current operations. If we had to get to a place where we don't have the support to maintain our operations through funding, it would be very difficult to maintain services that we currently have, and it would, it would impact our staff and our students in a very negative way.
Sure, we just approved three riffs earlier, didn't we?
Yeah, and that was through our process of really evaluating. Yeah. And that was through our process of really evaluating, um, because there were some changes, um, in terms of high school programming. We were able to do some reductions, and a lot of the people, there, there would have been more, but there were people who took other jobs at Crawford. And that was through that operational efficiency at the high school with some of the redesign they've been, um, ongoing with.
Thank you. Passes five to zero.
Finally, I have, uh, temporary appropriations for fiscal year twenty-three. So, um, I neglected to tell you that the forecast for fiscal twenty-three was made above all of our budgets for the year from all our departments and buildings. And the temporary appropriations brings the budgets and the forecast, so the ninety-seven million for the general fund that was on the forecast, uh, we were projecting a normal year with staffing and operations. And then all other funds, uh, based on if it's student activities, what they've submitted for their budgets, we know our, our debt schedules, uh, permanent improvement, we have our, uh, bus purchase program, maintenance schedules, and technology replacements, so things like that, we already know. And grants, budgets. So the temporary appropriations for fiscal twenty-three at one point, one hundred and thirty-six million dollars is required. With that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the temporary appropriations as listed.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or discussions, Frank? That passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
There's some items on here from Student Services for information. Um, every year, we bring a series of handbooks to the board. Um, you have handbooks tonight for attendance enrollment, nurse and health assistants, coaches, and athletic directors. So those are on there. If you have questions about those, as you review those, just let me know, and they'll be on for approval at the next meeting.
Thank you. That brings us to Superintendent Dick.
So I just wanted to take a couple of moments and share a couple of things. Again, at this point, most of our staff is, you know, finished with the student portion of the year. We still have staff that are working all year long. Some of our bus drivers are still taking ProKiel students and Butler Tech students, and obviously field trips. But it's been a year of, um, change, a year of, um, ups and downs. And through it all, I think what has really been hopeful and inspiring to me is the way people have truly come together. Um, our buildings have come together in ways to support each other, um, during that subcrisis. In, um, January, the amount of flexibility people showed to really just do whatever was needed, um, was incredibly inspiring. Um, we've been through a lot as a community this year. Um, very emotional, um, losses that we've experienced. And our community has always come together and been strong, and I am extremely proud of how, as an educational community, we have not only weathered the storm this year, but we have used these instances to bring us together, to unify our mission, and to really come together to make sure that we will continue to persevere and prevail and do great things in spite of what anything is thrown at us. And it has been a truly inspiring year. And I just want to give kudos and credits to everyone in this district who has, um, been a part of that journey, because it's been, as Davey mentioned, it has been hard. But I think at this point in the year, um, everyone is holding their head up high and extremely proud of being part of a team that can do what we did with the obstacles that were in front of us. And with that, um, trying to celebrate some things, we had two graduations, and I think there's some stats that are truly amazing that I want to share. Four hundred and sixty-three graduates from Corrine High School and two hundred and twenty-eight graduates from Northwest High School. And we had four point six million dollars in scholarships awarded to Corrine High School and three point four nine million to Northwest High School. These are astounding numbers based on the students and their accomplishments in our two high schools. We had a total of twenty-five sumas between the two schools. We actually had three students at Corrine High School and two at Northwest High School who not only walked across the stage to get their high school diploma, but they got an associate's degree at the exact same time. We had a hundred and ninety kids from Corrine High School who graduated from Corrine High School from a Butler Tech program. And a hundred and fourteen who graduated from Northwest High School out of a Butler Tech program. And then we had eight Corrine High School students who enlisted in the military and eight from Northwest High School. And one of our North, Northwest High School students who went into the military was actually accepted into West Point. The accomplishments of our students is hands down amazing, and I will put those stats against anyone, anywhere. Our kids are amazing, and they're doing tremendous things, and that needs to be celebrated across the board. The other thing that was really inspiring was this week, we actually honored three cohorts of people who retired from our district. Every year, we have people who have spent their career with us and are moving on to the next chapter of their life. And we appreciate all the time they gave us, and we had, um, because of the pandemic, we were not able to bring them together to celebrate them the last two years, so we had three different cohorts of retirees that we were able to bring together. And the wealth of information and love and institutional knowledge that was in that room was just overwhelming. And the relationships that were there and the stories that they had. And the amount of lives that that group of people were able to touch and influence that will continue to be felt by this community for years down the road was truly inspiring to be in the room with that greatness and recognize that. So I want to give kudos to our retirees and thank them for the work that they've done and the legacy that they leave us, and promise them that we will continue to do great work and honor the work that they've done and continue that journey that they put us on. So I just want to give a lot of shout-outs to a lot of people because they all deserve it. So thank you.
Any questions or comments for Daryl?
Um, I just wanted to ask about the ser- the survey that went out, the culture survey. Um, what prompted the survey? How were the questions selected? Um, is that a one-time thing or?
So when we wrote out our strategic plan, we obviously are trying to quantify and measure our growth in those areas that were identified by the community. And so some of the areas are very easy to quantify in student achievement. Some of the other areas are more difficult to quantify. And so we had tried in the past to do surveys that we locally developed, but they didn't come back with data that was truly actionable. So we partnered with Hanover, who is a nationally known educational researcher. And they have surveys already developed that are field-tested and statistically valid. And so we were able to share with them, these are the areas that we're trying to measure in terms of, you know, our culture and climate, um, our parents and our students and our staff. And so they were able to use the questions that are field-tested from them, merge those to the areas that we said we needed, um, help to measure and quantify, and that's how that was developed. It will be a multi-year survey, so we'll do it now. And then they recommend about every two years to go back and, um, check the temperature again using the same survey, so you're comparing apples to apples. So we went with them as a, as one of the leading researchers in education to help us quantify some of the culture and climate things that are really hard, um, to really put numbers to.
So these are things that were recognized in another area that we had maybe some issues or concerns about?
And we wanted data that we could say is valid and statistically reliable so that we could actually take action on those things and then measure our growth. So that we ask our staff members all the time to, you know, monitor student growth over time. How are they doing? Are they improving? And we want to be able to do that for ourselves as well and hold ourselves to the same standard that we're going to get some baseline data this year, we're going to take some action to make sure that the next time we give this survey, that areas that are shown as needing growth, grow.
Is it a one, we pay for at one time, or do we have to continue to pay for that same survey?
It was a multi-year contract. Um, so we also have access not just to the survey, but we have a contract where we can actually go to them and say, we, uh, because they have a database of research. So we have access to all of their research, their white papers, and we can actually go to them and say, we would like, so, like, to look into this. We're investigating something for our district, and they would actually, um, be a research partner to help give us feedback and do some of that, like, workforce. So we have, it's a robust contract, not just for the survey, but for access to research to help us continue to learn and grow.
So that, the results of that, then will that be shared?
Yes, once the survey closes tomorrow, then actually Hanover will do all the data analysis because it's completely anonymous to us as a district, um, so people can be completely honest. And then we'll get the results back in July, and we'll be able to update the board and the community about what it was, what it, the survey came back as and what our takeaways are and what we're going to do to improve.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, that brings us to board member comments. Mr. Heeder?
Just wanted to compliment both high schools, Mark, um, Northwest and Colrain on very good graduations. A little loud sometimes when names were announced, but other than that, very good ceremonies. Very proud to be a part of it.
And just wanted to piggyback on that to congratulate all the students from both high schools that graduated. Uh, and then I wanted to thank Chris Trentman, um, for bringing all the kids this year to our board meetings, um, and making the presentations, because I think it's, a, a lot of people don't know a lot about Butler Tech and just try to get it out there and say, hey, this is what your kid could, you know, get into, just like Matt's son is up at Middletown doing the aviation. And if you've ever seen that, it's a great program, and just, we have a bunch of programs just like that. Uh, but I just wanted to thank him for bringing the students this year. And then just wanted to, uh, welcome back Carrie and Emily, and good luck in the jobs.
Um, I want to thank Lori and Brenda and Daryl for responding to our questions about the curriculum. By no means am I qualified to judge a curriculum. I appreciate Dave and the feedback that everyone gave. That's, uh, is not a decision that I or I think anyone takes lightly. Um, all the discussion and prayful conversations that happened. I'd like to congratulate all of our graduates, both ceremonies, like Chris said, um, went very well. And congratulate Joe and Aaron, um, and their teams on an awesome job putting those on. And also continued prayers to the families impacted by the senseless tragedy in Texas. One thing that I did want to comment on is, uh, a few people recently in our district have made poor choices that have shed a negative light on our district, and I don't want that to overshadow all of the amazing accomplishments that our students and staff have had. Social media can be a blessing and a curse, and I think that, um, that you can't believe everything you read on Facebook. So I just, I would encourage community and parents to reach out to their administrator or anyone in the district. Um, transparency is what they will get, and I think that they will get, um, that those, I don't think those issues are taken lightly within the district as, as we've spoken about. So, um, I'd like to congratulate our PTA Teacher of the Year winners and our Substitutes of the Years, um, and Chris, Michelle, and Peter, and the Butler Tech students that, um, presented here tonight. So, um, thank you for having me, and Amy.
Just, uh, congratulations once again to all the, uh, PTA winners, uh, Teachers of the Year, along with the Substitutes of the Year. And, uh, thank you for, uh, Mrs. Newhouse coming, presenting from, uh, Houston Early Learning Center. I think, uh, in case you're not aware, Houston Early Learning Center is public preschool available through Northwest Local School District, I don't think, you know. A lot of parents, when they're looking for preschool, and I don't know that they always realize that that's an option. And, uh, it's a, a great program to utilize. And congratulations to all the graduates of both Colrain High School, both Northwest High School, and along with the ones that graduated Butler Tech with their diplomas as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Um, I want to start off first with, I'm a little envious of Athena. She gets quite the attention.
You want your belly rubbed?
Yeah, I need to have my belly rubbed occasionally. Um, welcome, Carrie, welcome, Emily. I've known the Hester family for quite a while. And, uh, i- it's really exciting to see you engage back into our district. The graduates, it was two great ceremonies, shook, uh, I guess if I do the math, it's almost seven hundred hands. My daughter graduated this year, so I got to hand her her diploma, and I'm a very fortunate father that gets to have his name at the bottom of her diploma. There was, I think there was a back one around whether I was going to cry when my daughter walked up. I did not cry, for the record. But I did get teary-eyed when we recognized a few of our graduates that came across the stage, and everybody stopped. We had a couple periods where it got a little loud and a little crazy, but everybody stopped and took a moment to support these graduates. And then so to dovetail on that, to what Nicole was saying, I'm highly offended by some of the things that are in social media about our school district. Can I see that sheet that you read? Your student achievement sheet? I don't want you to. This is our list that we read. It's about this length almost every board meeting. Our school district is incredibly successful, and if somebody wants to challenge us on that, I'll meet them at Panera any time to talk about that. And I'm, I'm tired of, uh, individuals in our community, uh, that try to defeat the efforts that our staff and our teachers put forward. And you can tell I'm a little passionate about that because I am very proud of the two chi- children that I raised in this district. And they're nobody special. They're just kids in the community, and this is what they got from their experience here. And so I'm challenging everybody. When you see that, shut it down. Step up and be part of a, a, a voice and stand up for our school district because I'm a, I'm a very strong believer, and that is the enemy's effort to try to derail the good things that we do in our school district, and, and we will call it out and shine a light on it. I'm sorry, soapbox, I guess.
Well said.
Thank you. Um, these people work really, really hard to get our children ready for the next phase of life, and, uh, we're not going to stand for bringing it down. We will look at anything that we're wrong at. I think we always do. Uh, we're certainly not perfect. We, we make mistakes. But we're not going to take any, any blows that are not, um, ours to take. That, that won't happen. And they'll probably use me as a voice for that, so. So thank you so much. We appreciate, uh, all the educators for a successful year. I think we finished incredibly strong. Uh, one of the things as a board we wanted to do this year was to really, really shine a light on the positive, successful things that happened. And I think our student achievement report that, uh, Nicole did, they were lengthy every board meeting, and.
And I don't think we even scratched the surface.
Thank you. That's exactly it. Um, I've attempted to try to get to as many PTA meetings as I can because I want people to come and brag about what experiences they've had. We'll have Karen and Trey up here soon. We had a grandmother reach out from their school bragging about how successful experience that her grandkids had. And a few conversations back and forth, she's going to come and present how she feels. And we're going to start getting saturated with the positives that are going on in our district to outshine the negatives. That's all I'll shut up after that.
Thank you, Mark.
We will be going into an executive session, and that is to approve a mo- uh, we need a motion to approve that. The, it'll be for the consideration of appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. We will come back from that. We will not have any board agenda items other than to dismiss the meeting. So you're welcome to stay or take advantage of going maybe to a late dinner. Um, so I need a motion in a second to adjourn into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.